That's March 20th, Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. And good news, it'll get all the way up to 34 tonight. Yes, I have extra firewood. That's right. We're going to have Pastor Roger Vest. Good to have you again this morning, Roger. Lead us in the opening prayer. And those who will and able, please stand.
As I drove in this morning praying real hard, I got in at 8:59 this morning. That's one thing the Cobb County traffic does. It causes you to pray. Amen. I'm the eternal optimist. That's it. Let's pray. Father, thank you for those who, Lord, have listened to your call to serve in the public square. Lord, we know at times it is not easy. Father, we know that we all need to listen, to hear, to consider. We need patience. We need kindness. We need grace and mercy. Above all, Lord, we need your wisdom to be able to make the decisions that affect the lives of so many of our brothers and sisters. Lord, I just ask that you come and you dwell in this place. Before we were here, you were here. And you will be here and you will follow us. Lord, grant each one who speaks today, Lord, your wisdom, that whatever decisions, whatever conversations, whatever actions are made, Lord, will be done to lift up your kingdom and your children. Father, thank you for the opportunity and the privilege of serving in whatever capacity that you have called us. Father, thank you for those that have gathered here to give of their time. All of these things, Lord, we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One vision under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Roger, I just want to thank you for all of you and your church are doing for our community. You're doing a great job out there. Thank you. And with that, John, I leave it in your hands.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When the case is called, we ask that the applicant stand to signify that they are in attendance. Then we're going to call for any opposition to signify they are here so they can be counted for the official record. After the counting of the opposition, the applicant and any opposition will be asked to come forward to be sworn in so they can present testimony to the Board of Commissioners. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case or concerns. There is not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time. So convey all your information to the Board of Commissioners within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person wishing to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because, as I said, each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the Board of Commissioners will start to discuss the matter at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. And after that, the Board will make a decision to either hold, continue, approve, or deny the case at hand. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. That's rezoning case Z-81 of 2017, Todd LaBelle. That case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Mr. Chairman, Board, there is one case on today's agenda in which the applicant is seeking to withdraw the case without prejudice, and the applicant is here today. That's rezoning case Z-13, Dunkin' Land Investments LLC. The applicant has submitted a request, Mr. Chairman, that this be withdrawn without prejudice.
Good morning. I would like to make a motion to allow Z-13 to withdraw without prejudice.
Second in discussion. Call a question. Passes five to zero. Thank you, Commissioner.
There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued by the staff of the Planning Commission and will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-56 of 2017, Oak Hall Companies LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the April 3, 2018 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-56 of 2017 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-3 of 2018, Punkypoo LLC. That case was continued by the staff, or excuse me, the case was continued by the Planning Commission until the April 3, 2018 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-3 would not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-7 of 2018, 3103 ND LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the April 3, 2018 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-7 would not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-8 of 2018, Lloyd Development Services. That case was continued by the staff until the April 3, 2018 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-8 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-11 of 2018, Aziz Farista. That case was continued by the staff until the April 3, 2018 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-11 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-12 of 2018, Lloyd Development Services. That case was continued by the Planning Commission until the April 3, 2018 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So rezoning case Z-12 of 2018 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-16 of 2018, Vining Storage LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the April 3, 2018 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So rezoning case Z-16 will not be heard today. S-L-U-P-2 of 2018, 3103 ND LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the April 3, 2018 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So S-L-U-P-2 of 2018 will not be heard today. S-L-E-P-4 of 2018, Vining Storage LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the April 3, 2018 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So S-L-U-P-4 will not be heard today. Mr. Board, Mr. Chairman, Board, there are two cases on today's agenda which the applicants have just recently asked for continuances. The first case is rezoning case Z-5 of 2018, Polty Home Company LLC. The applicant is asking for additional time to work on the request, Mr. Chairman, Board.
It's mine, Mr. Chairman, to make a motion to continue Z-5 until the next zoning hearing.
Second.
Second in discussion. Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Additionally, rezoning case Z-77 of 2017, Ashton Atlanta LLC. The applicant is asking for a continuance on this, Mr. Chairman, Board, to continue to work on their project.
Make a motion to continue Z-77 until next zoning hearing.
Second in discussion. Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off. The ringing does interfere with the broadcast and presentations. So if you have a cell phone, please mute the volume. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If within the two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 or more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. An additional information about this is found on the table in the back of the room. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. There is one request for an early headcount today for one other business item. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to other business item number 11 of 2018, Nick and Anna Letzos? Please raise your hands. Let the record show there are four people here in favor, excuse me, in opposition to other business number 11. Can I get a show of people here who are in support of other business number 11? Let the record show there's four people here in favor of other business number 11. And with that, Mr. Chairman and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for March 20, 2018. Rezoning cases, rezoning case Z-87 of 2017, Petroplex Joint Venture, request rezoning from G.C. to N.R.C. for the purpose of a kitchen and cabinet showroom in landlot 708 of the 16th District. The property is located on the east side of Canton Road, south of Powell Wright Road. Staff recommends deletion to the LRO zoning district subject to the following conditions. Letter from Canton Road neighbors dated March 13, 2018 with the following amendments. A, add to number four, no backup signals permitted. B, change 14 to read prohibited uses to include pond, tidal pond, check cashing, adult entertainment establishments, establishments, massage parlors. C, add to number 18, applicant agrees to the pedestrian streetlight affidavit. D, add number 19, state's final site plan, including paint colors, building exteriors, architectural style, to be approved by the district commissioner. E, add number 20, which states applicant agrees to construct Monument Bay sign that will match the building, the building's exterior as exemplified in exhibit A. Board and sewer comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Site plan dated March 8, 2018 with the district commissioner approving the final plan. Elevation dated March 8, 2018 with the district commissioner approving the final plan. And email from Mr. Tom Mitchell dated March 13, 2018 regarding the Monument Bay sign. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, rezoning case Z-87? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Commissioner Cooper-Burl.
I would just like to say thank you to Canton Road neighbors. Some of you are here today, Carol and Ken and Jamie, for working together with the applicant, Mr. Mitchell, who has a representative here today. And we held this case last month for 30 days. And I guess a miracle happened and everything got worked out, and it's on consent. So I just want to say thank you to everyone for working together and taking care of a new revived, revitalized building on Canton Road. Thank you.
The only question I have is that backup signal. I'm guessing talking about the beeping sound?
Correct.
Is that a state law or? I just want, I mean, can you? Can you?
Well, how about if we restate that to state, no backup signal is permitted unless required by state or federal regulations?
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure we can't override.
Okay.
All right. Just want to make sure.
So we'll amend that to what I just said. Is that okay?
I get, I get what she's trying to do, what they're trying to do, but nonetheless. Okay.
But it's my understanding that the size bands that they will have of parking in the rear will not have that, or not required, or will not have that. So we can put that in as a safety measure. State or federal law. That's good.
I just said we came back up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rezoning case Z-6, Chastain Self-Storage, request rezoning from G.C. with stipulations to G.C. with stipulations for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-service storage facility, landlot 364, the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Chastain Road, east of the I-575 ramp. The Planning Commission recommends approval to the G.C.'s zoning district subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on December 6, 2017, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. James Bailey dated March 1, 2018. Variance to a required 40-foot landscape buffer abutting residential zone properties. Applicant to adhere to 70% impervious surface. Landscape plan to include landscaping around the wrought iron fence around the front of the building. Rear of the building to be combination of brick and stucco with final approval by the district commissioner. Fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-6? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Commissioner Burl.
Yes. In case you're not familiar with this area, this is an old BP station that has been closed for years, right at Chastain and 575. And this is another win-win for the community and the applicant, working together and replacing an old eyesore. So thank you to the Bell City Civic Association, many of you are here today as well, and Mr. Bailey for working together on this. Thank you.
Okay. Rezoning case Z-9, Green Park PCH Incorporated, request rezoning from LRO to ONI for the purpose of residential senior living, supportive, in landlot 525 of the 16th District. The property is located on the northwest side of Sandy Plains Road, north of Ebenezer Road. The Planning Commission recommends deletion to the, to the ONI zoning district subject to the following conditions. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr. dated January 10, 2018. For this use only, district commissioner to have final approval of the design of the one-story building. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-9? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Why didn't they just delete this to RSL?
It's a group.
Oh, it's not, it, oh, okay, all right. I didn't read that.
It is a group, Chairman, and RSL is a permitted use within ONI.
Well, then we need to change my cheat sheet here. Say that in here.
Okay. I'll take care of this. Okay. Rezoning case Z-10, Atlanta Road Property LLC, request rezoning from G.C. to LI for the purpose of a specialized contractor's office, in landlot 352 of the 17th District. The property is located on the southwest side of Atlanta Road, south of Miller Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval to the LI zoning district subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on February 16, 2018, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Landscape office use only. District commissioner to approve the building color and landscape plan. Variances as outlined in the zoning division comments and recommendations. No heavy equipment kept on site. No outdoor storage to the front of the building with outside storage behind the building to be approved by the zoning division manager. Owner developer applicant to install paved driveway aprons, which are to be approved by Cobb DOT. Existing sign to be removed fronting Atlanta Road and be replaced with a new ground-based monument-style sign that is at least one foot off the right-of-way. Fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-10? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Commissioner Burl.
John, I have a comment.
Okay.
We found out after the Planning Commission that the existing sign is not in the right-of-way. So the step, step number eight that says, remove the existing sign and replace with the Monument Bay sign, we're going to strike that and replace it with existing sign can remain with final approval by district commissioner.
Okay.
And that's step number eight from Mr. Rosen's letter. Or not from Planning Commission minutes. I'm sorry.
Okay. So we'll note that revision. Moving into special.
And then I think that's, that's, we're good.
Okay. Thank you. Moving into special annuals permits on the consent agenda. S-L-E-P-1, Chastain Self-Storage, request a special annuals permit for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-service storage facility in landlot 364, the 16th District. The property is located on the southeast corner of Chastain Road and the ramp from I-575. The Planning Commission recommends approval subject to site plan received by the zoning division on December 6, 2017, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. James Bailey dated March 1, 2018. Variance to a required 40-foot landscape buffer abutting residential zone property. Fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to S-L-U-P-1? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Moving into other business items on the consent agenda. Other business item number three is to consider a stipulation amendment for Mr. Joseph Josie regarding, regarding rezoning application Z-44 of 2016 for property located on the east side of Johnson Ferry Road at Waterfront Drive, landlot 470 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval subject to the proposed elevations received by the zoning division on March 16, 2018, with the district commissioner approving any changes. And all previous stipulations, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment remain intact. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number three? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Can we show up?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I want to thank the applicant for working with the community and myself and coming up with what I think is a whole lot better-looking product.
Other business item number 12 is to consider amending the zoning stipulations for United Sign Advertising LLC regarding rezoning application Z-104 of 1997 for property located on the north side of the East West Connector, east of Powder Springs Road in landlot 788 of the 19th District. Staff recommends approval subject to proposed sign renderings contained in the other business packet, with the district commissioner approving any changes. And all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain intact. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 12? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Next, please, consent agenda, Chairman and Board.
Comments? Okay. All right. You ready?
That's it.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as revised.
Second.
In discussion. Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. All those folks that were on consent agenda, you're free to go. Moving into the continued case agenda. Rezoning case Z-84 of 2017, Randy E. Pimsler, request a rezoning from R-20 to FST for the purpose of townhomes in landlot 410 of the 18th District. The property is located on the north side of Hillcrest Drive, east of South Gordon Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-84 of 2017? Please keep your hands raised. Let the record show there's five people here opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. My name is Randy Pimsler at 455 Glen Ives Drive, Atlanta, Georgia. We appreciate the opportunity to present the application to rezon 260 Hillcrest from R-20 to RA-5. At the suggestion of Planning Commissioner Porter, the application, the original application has been modified from FST to RA-5. Two variances are requested at this time, one to allow for a five-unit building on the west side of the property, and the second is to allow for a four-foot reduction in the front yard setback at their required deceleration lane, parallel to Hillcrest. Throughout this process, we've worked diligently to address the concerns expressed in the initial community meeting with Commissioners Cupid and Porter, which took place back in December. The modifications that are most notable are the reduction in height of the buildings from three-story townhomes to two-story units. We modified the private roads that were initially presented in our design drawings to public roads with associated right-of-ways and the required cul-de-sacs on the east and west side of the property. We provided additional visitor or guest parking and added amenities, fencing, and landscaping at the recommendation and request of both of our commissioners. There was an ongoing concern about sanitary sewer, and if we could flip to the third slide, I believe. Let's go back one, I'm sorry. The, this slide is intended to show some information that was provided by Tim Davidson with Cobb County. And in the north and east corner of our property, you'll note, just off of our property, you'll note a yellow circle with a green line attached to it. That is a existing sewer that's on the school property to the north of our site. And the next slide, which is a little bit difficult to read, but shows that same manhole pretty much in the center portion, right above the north arrow on this site plan. The elevation of that invert or the bottom of the pipe where the, where our sanitary would tie in to that via anisement is, is pretty much the elevation of Hillcrest at our entry to the property. So we certainly have that existing sanitary sewer to tie into. There's also a sanitary sewer about 400 feet to the east along Hillcrest. So we, we've spent a bit of time trying to address this concern that's been expressed. We don't believe that the sanitary sewer is going to pose an ongoing obstacle to the, to the development of the project. Buffers and the architecture, we believe, are important aspects of this project. We've worked diligently to provide colored images of four-sided architecture for the buildings, wrapping brick, siding, and related materials on all four sides of the building. We've provided a minimum of a 20-foot landscape buffer on the east and west. There's a 50-foot front yard setback that'll be landscaped per our site plan. We've added a 40-foot naturally maintained landscape buffer at the request of Commissioner Porter to the most recent site plan. And we feel that the additional improvements along the right-of-way, deceleration lane, turn lane, as required by the Department of Transportation, and sidewalks make this a, an enhancement to the community. It ties in nicely to the newer developments along the property to the east and the west. And we're attempting to be as respectful as we can of the existing larger single-family residences by providing buffering and architecture that is in keeping with what we see along the adjacent properties. We would ask for your support this morning for this rezoning, and we'd be glad to answer any questions, comments, or concerns that the commission might have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And those that are in opposition, there were, there were four of them, is that correct? Five, just want you to know you have 10 minutes total, so just be, you know, sensitive to each other's time if you all want to speak. And let us know who you are and where you reside for the record, please.
Good morning. My name's Lori Dennington. I'm one of the residents on Hillcrest. Just my main point is that, that the proposed development does not really fit in with the character of the rest of the neighborhood. On paper, it looks like there are a lot of subdivisions in that area, but you can also see in surrounding our, some larger plats, which is where I live on one of those. I believe that this development is better suited for more of an urban setting rather than the rural. You almost have to just take a drive down the road to see what it would look like and how it would change the, the look of the neighborhood. There, while there are subdivisions in there, once again, those are single-family homes. While there are subdivisions in there, once again, those are single-family homes. The proposed development sits about, will be about 50 feet off of the road. And so, we will end up seeing the backside of those townhomes. And we're not opposed to single-family homes being built on that piece of property. We would just like to see everything with the same look, rather than something very concentrated. Thank you.
My name's Frank Dennington, and I'm a longtime resident of Cobb County. In fact, my entire family has been part of the county for going back to the 1920s. And we're, of course, concerned about the very thing that my wife Lori discussed, but I want to add a couple of other issues with regards to this. With the townhomes introducing 31 new families in this area, the sidewalk situation, as far as what the county is providing to be able to provide safe foot traffic for, and particularly children that may be going to either one of the schools that are definitely within walking distance, it seems to me that there needs to be at least some investigation on how the county can hook up with whatever sidewalks are being provided by the developer in this situation, because we're going to introduce a very dangerous situation at the intersection of South Gordon and Hillcrest, where there are blind spots on the side of the road of Hillcrest, where the development is located. And it's already presented some dangerous situations with pedestrian traffic. This does need to be addressed, and it needs to be looked at. The other aspect of it is, is that with 31 homes, you're potentially going to be introducing at least a minimum of 31 to 62 additional automobiles that are going to be, being, adding to the traffic there at that intersection and on Hillcrest. And at the very least, there needs to be, again, to help the pedestrian traffic, as well as the traffic flow of automobiles and vehicles, a traffic signal installed at that intersection. But again, I want to just add my agreement with my wife. We discussed this with Lisa Cupid at the community meeting. The overall character of this development just sticks out like a sore thumb compared to everything else that exists in the area. It very definitely is a beautiful facility, but the character of it fits more of an urban type of setting than the rural setting that does exist in this case. The apartments that have been built go back to the 19, late 1960s, early 70s, and are hidden from the main traffic flow, where they're not necessarily seen. This, in the entire area, does not, there's nothing, anything like it. So, that's one of our concerns about this, and we do feel that while we don't mind seeing development take place, the character of this just doesn't fit the area, and single-family residents would be something that would be better suited in this case. Thank you for hearing our concerns.
Good morning. My name is Gerald Joel Hager. I live on South Gordon Road. This property would be behind mine. I agree with the concerns that have been laid out already by my neighbors. One of the primary ones being the additional traffic. The Department of Transportation did request and got the deceleration lane as a concession, but that's only handling traffic in one direction. This is a two-lane road, and as Commissioner Cupid mentioned in the zoning meetings before in December, there is a plan on the books to widen Hillcrest, but not anytime soon. You're talking about adding additional traffic. There's also a concern that's still unaddressed by the school board, because of the schools that are over-enrolled, and potentially adding more students to that. This is going to create a resource strain, and considering that the commission has already stated that services could potentially be cut due to lack of funding, you're now introducing 31 more homes, looking for those same services.
Thank you to those who came out today. Thank you to the applicant for meeting with residents and for the residents for being here and reiterating the concerns that you shared at the community zoning meeting that we had. The assessments made by the community are not afar off, and I'll start with traffic being a concern. The intersection of Hillcrest and South Gordon is a challenging intersection. Right now, our Department of Transportation does rate that Hillcrest Drive to be a traffic level of C, which doesn't warrant immediate changes to that intersection. And unfortunately, from being in this seat oftentimes for other zonings, it takes additional volume to be able to get improvements, even when they look from a visual perspective that they're warranted. Sometimes the numbers don't necessarily reflect that. I still would like to have someone from DOT come up to the podium, so I can ask a question.
Hi, Ashley White with the Department of Transportation.
Yes, good morning, Ms. White.
Good morning.
There have been some challenges at that intersection of Hillcrest and South Gordon. Has there been further assessment by DOT to see what can be done at that intersection in lieu of a traffic light?
Well, as you mentioned earlier, the traffic counts are very low on that road. I think it's 5,000 cars per day, which wouldn't typically warrant a signal, but we definitely can look into it and see if there are any crash issues or things of that nature, or any safety concerns that could potentially warrant a signal in the future.
Okay, that will be helpful. I don't know if a stop sign could be appropriate for that intersection. Just when you have schools, there's two elementary schools on both sides of that road, which make it difficult for traffic coming off of Hillcrest to turn left off of Hillcrest onto South Gordon. And also, visibility is somewhat of a concern, as you can see, that's a curve right there. So, sometimes it's just very hard to gauge the speed of traffic. Typically, when we talk about intersection improvements, we do mention traffic lights, but I'm curious to know if even a stop, a stop sign could be considered for that intersection.
We'll talk with our traffic operations department and see, you know, what their general feel is on that intersection, and see if a three-way stop is appropriate.
Okay. I appreciate that. Also, I believe Gault Porter mentioned this when we did have our zoning meeting, because it was news to me about a desire to want to widen Hillcrest, as resulting in us changing the design plans because of the amount of right-of-way that would be needed potentially if the road were to be widened. Can you share how imminent that?
I believe that is in our long-range transportation plan, so it won't be anything that happens within the next couple of years. And that's dependent on funding and things of that nature. But I haven't seen any plans to widen it in the near future.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just had to fall into that. Looking at the GIS, it doesn't look like there's sidewalk on either side of Hillcrest once you get past that Shenandoah Drive, because my question was going to be, it doesn't look like you have enough right-of-way to widen it and put sidewalks, even with how they've changed the plan. I mean, are we not going to be limiting what you can do to widen the road with where the plan is laid out?
With the sidewalk that they're showing on Hillcrest now?
Well, that's my question. Are they putting a sidewalk in? And then, are they, are you being limited down the road? Because I don't see any sidewalk past Shenandoah, going east on either side. And I'm assuming that if you're going to widen the road, you're going to want to put sidewalks on both sides.
Right.
And you're going to have at least two lanes. It just doesn't look like, with where this development's laid out on the lot, like Commissioner Cupid said, I don't see how you can do what I would anticipate, I would think that you were going to do if this is put in the way it's being proposed.
Right. And like I said earlier, I believe that's part of the long-range plan, so it may, it may happen, or it may not happen.
Right, but if it's part of the long-range plan, and something's put in there, and then you can't do it, well then, it just doesn't happen.
I, yes, I can briefly address that. There is a plan to, in fact, we're programming sidewalks for Hillcrest, so that will be coming in on both sides of the road, because we have recognized that pedestrian safety is an issue on this roadway. But it's my understanding, and the applicant may need to approach the podium as well, but that the design of the subdivision has been modified to be pulled back further away from the center line because of the additional right-of-way that would be required if the roads were widened.
Right, and he's installing the right turn and left turn lanes, so.
Yeah, which would provide an addition, will widen Hillcrest more where those lanes are. But I believe that this plan has been modified specifically to address that issue, that the space is constrained. Yes, Mr. Pimsler, I don't know if you'd like to address that.
If we could go back to the first slide in the PDF, there's a site plan, proposed site plan, and what it indicates is that the 40-foot right-of-way has been shown to be widened to 60-foot with the building setbacks and sidewalks in keeping with that widening. And as Commissioner Cupid indicated, we have, well, this might be a future provision, there is a left turn lane into the property as one heads east, southeast on Hillcrest, and then there's a deceleration lane. And all of those, including the sidewalk, are provided for in the proposed right-of-way area. So, we did all of our front yard setbacks and landscaping, fencing, et cetera, off of the proposed right-of-way, not off of the existing right-of-way. And that was actually identified in our very first community meeting back in the early part of December. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. White. Additional questions? Did you have additional questions or transportation? Okay.
I know the developer is required to do sidewalks on the frontage, but the property to Gordon Road, you said that's in your sidewalk?
Yes, we're, yes, we're programming that now. Yes, ma'am.
That, that one?
For full, yes, ma'am, for the full length of Hillcrest.
Got a couple of questions.
Cole?
What do you? Okay. No, please. Huh. Can we go back to the zoning, the surrounding zoning, please? Zoom out a little bit. I guess I'm curious about what your future land use talks about in this area, since it appears to me everything's R 20 surrounding this, except for an R 15, and this would be the highest, that's the, in this area, and everything else is single-family homes. So, it, I mean, it appears to me, you know, it's your district, but it appears to me it's out of character with what's surrounding there. So, I'm just curious about that.
Yes, immediately, if you look at this view, it is, and I was going to get to the layout of the development, and we'll get to that now. The residents who live in the area, who are longer-term residents, are right, there is a mixture of use along Hillcrest. Primarily, it is single-family. If you were to pull the map up north, we just approved a few years ago, I'm sorry, the other way, sir. Thank you. FST along Shenandoah, and there's more dense development if you go south. However, just immediate on Hillcrest, from a visual perspective, you can see there are a couple of apartment complexes that are along, that are along that roadway. So, density was a factor in how this was considered by both the planning commissioner for this area and myself. One thing that the applicant has done is their application has been reduced to, or deleted to RA 5. RA 5 is permitted within the medium-density residential category for future land use. MDR is the future land use designation for this parcel. From a density perspective, it does, it does fit what has been planned for in the long term.
That's it.
Oh, okay, no problem.
And they are under the top?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. So, it's a challenge. I can certainly understand where the residents are coming from. So, from a density perspective, it does fit what's in our future land use map. From a visual perspective, it is, it is a change, and there's some varying changes along this roadway, which again, what's, is what makes this application a difficult one to decide upon. A lot of our housing is, older housing, and the house next door is a beautiful home owned by Mr. Jackson, who's here today, that's on a very large tract. This area is an older area, which has not seen new development in some time, and in fact, we've had some challenges with some of the existing development. It's, and some of it being in disrepair, particularly some of our higher-density homes. So, when we saw this application being one of the most recent private application, private developer applications we had in the area, it was perceived positively by some of the neighborhood to see stronger development for this part of the community. So, my decision is to weigh how this fits in, where residents would like to see this go, and where this area has been, and see if there is some middle ground. The middle ground, I believe, for some of the residents who are here today would be to see single-family in that area. But I believe from a topographical perspective, this is a tough property to develop on, and we just have not had movement in this area for a number of years, so it is hard to turn this opportunity down to have new development here. I believe that the issues of transportation and pedestrian safety have been addressed with this application, and sewer has also been addressed with this application. And the density does comport with what would be permissible under the future land use map designation. Mr. Pimsler has put forward a product that's a more attractive product, but I think could use some improvement to the area, and as well as agree to more robust landscaping. And I'm inclined to support it, to just bring some type of residential improvement to an area which has declined, and the most recent development that has been in this area has been, has been habitat homes. And we've had two habitat home communities approved here, and just, again, not private development moving here in a long period of time. So, I just think that this balances out what could be an opportunity to get stronger private development here in a way that doesn't provide a greater detriment in density than what was already perceived under our future land use map designation. I did speak with Mr. Jackson, and he does have some concerns, which are, which are understandable about traffic coming from the townhome development onto his property. And so, I'd like to see if the applicant can approach here. Mr. Jackson is to the east of this property. Don't have his, his address here. Yes, where the cursor is. Would you be willing to put up a metal black fence to separate any traffic coming from your property onto his property?
Yes, ma'am, and we would propose that it would follow the, a similar pattern of fencing as shown on our ASP 1.0 without the brick pilasters, if that would be acceptable.
Okay. And let me just ask the burning question as I move forward, too. There's a strong desire from the residents who are here today to see single-family homes. Can you speak about? Can you speak about how you consider that in light of your application here today?
Certainly. Appreciate the opportunity to respond to that concern. We looked at the property and determined that with the required setbacks, and as you mentioned earlier, the topographic concerns on the north end of the property, that the, the property would be severely limited in the number of units that could be developed, given the concerns for sanitary and storm. We just felt that those numbers made the development of the site with a single-family layout quite challenging. We wanted to emphasize that we're below the allowable density based on the future land use plan and have, have no interest in, you know, exceeding that or increasing the number of residential units. And as you can see from the site plan, it feels like this is a fairly good fit before we get to the topographic change in the land on the north end of the property. For those reasons, we, we propose to remain with the, the townhome development.
Okay. Are you willing to put in denser landscaping than what is proposed to better hide the property? There was some comment about the other multifamily housing that's along this roadway and how it's better hid with the trees that are along Hillcrest.
Sure, we have a, again, a 50-foot buffer to the buildings along Hillcrest. We have 40-foot yards on the east and west for the most part. And if, as we develop the plan, if, if you would accept a condition that, and I believe this is in our stipulation letter, that the final landscape plan and perhaps the final architecture as presented along Hillcrest would be reviewed and approved at your discretion. We have no problem with, with those being added as stipulations.
Okay. Yep. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay. The last issue has to do with sewer that was a continuing issue during our community discussions. And as was shown in the applicant's presentation, that there's sewer access that is on the school property that is leveled to Hillcrest that could potentially be tied into. And I believe that the planning commissioner also added a stipulation to, to support access that is in line with Hillcrest. Some point number six, that no lift stations will be allowed. There was some concern about the topography on Hillcrest and how sewer would be accommodated. So with that, I would like to move that the board approve application Z-84, deleting it to the RA5 zoning category, subject to the stipulation letter provided by the applicant on February 27, 2018, with not otherwise in conflict with the planning commission recommendations and suggestions. I would like to also add that the applicant erect a fence to the east of the property line. A black metal fence east of the property line adjacent to the residential property. Also want to emphasize that the district commissioner is to approve building architecture, including material color, architecture, and design. Also add a stipulation to support what's already in the applicant's letter that landscaping is to be dense to hide visibility of the homes along Hillcrest. All other staff comments and recommendations to be included, not otherwise in conflict.
Second.
Stormwater, got a question for you. And basically, while you're walking up, what's happening to the stream?
Good day, Brad with Stormwater Management Division. That, the blue line shows on the GS, but Frank Gibson has determined it's not, it's not a state water. It doesn't, doesn't have a buffer on it.
So there's no buffer with it?
That drainage that's coming through there will be conveyed through the site, through the pond, and then released downstream where it's going now.
All right, thanks. Commissioner Cupid, I understand the issue about density and all that, but I think this is one of those ones where the intensity is important to discuss. Very familiar with the area. I've built, I've helped build about five of the habitat homes out there. And what I see on this site plan is 15 homes up against three on Hillcrest. And then when I look at the elevation drawings, you know, we've seen townhomes or whatever pose where they have entries along like a road like Hillcrest instead of being internal to the subdivision. I'm assuming that there's gonna be some porches on the back of these. And it just seems to me that, I, I agree with the opposition that it just, I don't, I don't think it's gonna look right. Even with the heavy landscaping, it's just gonna look out of place, so I can't support it.
Any other comments?
I had a quick question.
Sure.
I can't seem to find a planning commission notes, but you mentioned something about lift stations. Is that a requirement not to have? The only concern I have there is if, for some reason, you can't get sewer, then that keeps, then you have to have a septic tank, which I don't think we need, or the development can't go in.
Exactly, the latter, the development wouldn't move forward without.
Lift stations seem to work perfectly fine, so I don't know if we need it.
But Stormwater would like to address that question. I, I do not want to pose as a stormwater engineer.
It's just a kind of unwritten policy of the Water Department, but it, they work fine everywhere else.
Tim Davidson, Cobb County Water and Sewer?
Yes, can you, Commissioner Weatherford provided that there doesn't seem to be an issue with adding a lift station here. I, I know it was a continuing issue, and I, I've never seen this added as a condition on a zoning. But I presume that there were so many issues with respect to sewer that this is why it's here.
Well, it appears that there are probably three possible connections to sewer. One being on the school property, another being in Hillcrest, and another farther off the map in a subdivision, which I can't remember the name, that would require easements. There was a lot of discussion amongst the opposition about lift stations. I tried to explain to them are the, the code and policy on lift stations. This would, if a lift station were to be used for this, it would, it would have to be a public lift station. It's serving more than one property, because these would be individual and fee simple townhomes. And I explained to them, the code doesn't disallow new public lift stations. It simply discourages them.
Is that satisfactory?
Other than the fact that if I can't get the sewer, then I can't do development, I'm sorry. And, you know, I know there's a new policy coming out on that we've been working on. The main thing is if there were to be one, any, you know, I don't have that many, but if I do have any, I require performance bonds, extra motors, et cetera, et cetera, be placed in our inventory to make sure that we're taken care of in the future. But I, I don't see a reason to deny it if you want to approve it. If they can use a lift station that's maintained and provided by the developer and/or performance in the future, then they have the right to, to get the sewer.
And I just want to echo Commissioner Ott's statements. Just that you look at the pole area there, the density to me is just for Hillcrest plus the nature of the, of the community. So I will not be supporting this either.
Makes it a tough applic, thank, you can be seated, thank you. It makes it a tough application. I don't know if there's, who would address topography here? Dave? Yes, Dave, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, looking at the proposed development and the topography, is there any buildable area beyond what's, what's being proposed?
On the site plan? Yes, on the far, on the far side of the draw that runs up through there is basically the same, same topo as, as on the street side. And they're leaving that as open space, so it's not any more dip. My opinion wouldn't be any more difficult to develop than.
So is accessible to develop?
Access is kind of the biggest pain to getting across there. Yeah, the slopes, the slopes actually are there similar, if not even a little bit less than this side, so.
I mean, that's, I mean, what are, what are the contour lines that?
Those are, I think those are two feet.
Two-foot lines?
I think those are two foot, yes.
Okay. 1050, yeah, it's a 30-foot draw. That's gonna be interesting, how you lay that on the side of that hill.
Significantly, and then you'd have to come back up.
Because there, there may not, that, that's a stream when it rains, with those contour lines.
It's not a huge drainage area, it's just a part, the part of the.
I'm just looking at the contour lines.
But that's where the water flows.
I wouldn't want to put a tent in the middle of that, at the bottom of that.
No, you're not gonna camp in there.
So Dave, how would you access the back part of the development, looking at that drop from 66 to 32?
You probably wouldn't want to, the, the grade going down and back up, if you went direct, would probably, DOT is probably not gonna allow that. But if you went around, if you went around the outside and came across the top along the school property, that, that would be, DOT'd have to dress up, but I think that would be, that'd be easy.
Commissioner Cupid, it just seems to me.
I'm asking this, yeah.
Okay.
I'm asking these questions because I hear what the commissioners are saying, right? I'm, I'm trying to go out there and take a risk and see the development, but they're right, it is a change. The only thing that comports is what's south of Hillcrest. You know, there is FST in the area. This does comport from a density perspective. It's, I'm concerned about not encouraging development in an area that has really been a challenging area of, of the county. And, and this hasn't moved for a long period of time.
I hear, I hear your concerns. I, I just think that this, sometimes, every now and then, there's just a piece of land that screams R-20 because of the contours.
We also think that part of it is, my guess is, the number of units is dictated by the price. And it may be that it's just, the owner is asking too much for the property. If that's the number of units you have to put on there. Yes, I know it meets the density, but like the chairman's saying, you know, we've had steeper developments on Spring Hill Parkway, and they're single-family homes. And I just think that, like I said, it, the density's not the issue. I think the intensity of what it's gonna look like along Hillcrest. I think that's really what I'm looking at.
Is it, we look at the development just to the right there, Commissioner. It sits up on top of a hilltop because that's what the land allows for. And then over here.
I'm sorry, I don't see what you're talking about.
On the contour, no, no, don't expand it. Go back down to the other side, to the original picture. You'll see where they put the house, it's on top of the hill because of the contour of the land. Whoops.
Are you talking about Mr. Jackson?
To, to the right.
Okay.
Okay, and over here, again, the contour would drive the, the kind of development you would have. And every now and then, I, I really support you in trying to develop this area. But every now and then, I just see a piece of land that just says, hey, you know, other than just flattening it, you're gonna have some issues with the contour here. And the contour, to me, just yells R-20 because of, of the, of the nature of the, of the land.
Well, R-20 is, is that included in?
That was the original zoning. It's currently zoned R-20. They wanted to go FST and they deleted to RA5.
Which is fitting with the future land use map.
Yeah, so, anyway. But, but I, I hear you, I just.
I'm torn, I'm, I'm sitting here torn even despite our motion.
May we, can we slide back down? I want to see the RA5 that was already existing.
Hey, John, how many units could you get at R-15, or even R-12?
I don't need the contours anymore, so just show me the zoning. It appears this RA5 are single-family homes. To me, that would be in the character as opposed to townhomes.
Yes, just the FST, which hasn't been developed on this map, which has been approved by the board.
And again, I'm torn, I agree with you when you explain why you want it, because you need some catalyst here. But a, even a single-family on a small lot, it, to me, is within character as opposed to a townhome without.
It would be, and the neighbors would be amenable to it. I just, you know, I know the applicant's product is to develop townhomes and has done a good job of doing it in another site. What I want to do for the, what I want to do is, for lack of making a decision, I need to really flesh out a little bit more what the possibilities are for this site, and possibly with the applicant. You know, I came here wanting to move this area forward, but certainly the, the concerns that the residents have shared and the commissioners are sharing, who are not supportive of the motion moving forward, resonate with, with the concern that I, I, I know is reasonable for Hillcrest. So let me, I don't know if I can modify a motion since it's out there or if it needs to.
We need to withdraw?
Yeah, yes, can I withdraw it? I'd like to withdraw this motion. Let me, I would like to hold this case for 30 days for the applicant. I want to hold the case and meet with the community to see what possibilities are. Yeah. Right, right, she withdrew, so her substitute motion is.
I need to withdraw in a second.
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
So we, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna vote to agree to withdraw, and then we're gonna vote.
It, since everyone agrees, there's no need to have a vote on the withdrawal. Yeah, yeah. We, we need to just, I'm sorry, see, the applicant here, the owner of the property here, would you like to address the discussion?
My name is Shay Embry, and I own the property. To give a little background in regard to my plans on the property was that, because this is what I do. The first thing that I do when I buy land, or actually before I close on it, is I look for precedence in the area. And while the newer subdivisions, the habitat homes are not attached homes, they are fairly dense. When we initially looked at this site, what I looked for was precedence for Fee Simple Town Home. And you could almost throw a rock from my property and hit a parcel that's zoned for Fee Simple Town Home right around the corner. While it hasn't been built, it's still zoned at Fee Simple Town Home. The next thing that I do is I go talk to the planners and say, what is appropriate? And when, in regard to a townhome development, I know there's been comments that maybe this is like an urban project. Well, an urban project that I've done was actually 18 townhomes per acre. This zoning allowed under a medium density is actually five homes per acre in Cobb County. So I'm not certain that urban would describe how this is. The townhomes that are designed, while you have drawings in your hands, have actually already been built, the exact product. And I think that some photographs of an existing development came across.
Yeah, I have them there. They seem to be different than what's being proposed here.
Yeah, they're pretty much exactly the same unit. We actually designed it around because it was, it sold well. These units would sell for mid to high 200s based on the square footage. Our initial design, when we look at the contour to, to, while we know that there is a swell there, not to be confused, because the first thing I did on the parcel is find out, is there water? Is there a stream? Is there state waters on the property? And the fact that there was not allowed me to move forward with my thoughts and my plans. There, there will always be a confusion in regard to whether you should do single-family or attached single-family. And these are not apartments, these are not condominiums, they just happen to share a wall. And so I think of them as attached single-family homes. And so while it will make an impact in the community to be there, I really feel like it's gonna be a great impact. I think that it's gonna get. like it's going to be a great impact. I think that it's going to give an, an opportunity for 31 families to raise their, their children within walking distance, and hopefully sidewalks will be extended from our development forward, but let their kids walk to school. That, I mean, you've got elementary and middle school right there where these kids could grow up walking to school. I mean, how many times do you get that opportunity to make that happen? So I just want to say that we have worked consistently to try to meet the needs of what the community's asking for. But at the end of the day, there's also numbers that have to work in regard to development. And putting in roads, if y'all, has gone up on pricing, partly because there's, people are so busy. So the cost of doing this development for detached, single-family homes, it has, has increased tremendously. I'm not even saying that you have to have anything built on this land. I'm just saying that this is what I do. I come in and I try to create the best possible situation to bring families in to help uplift communities. And I feel like we've got a great plan going forward with where we are. As far as reaching the back upper side of that land, we looked at that. Part of what we feel like we have is an opportunity to save forested land. So that entire section back there can remain for trailways, you know, for the kids when they're playing. So thanks for your consideration. If you have any questions, I mean, I'm available.
Thank you. I appreciate the comment shared. I'm going to still move forward with holding the application, take a look at some of the concerns shared by the residents, even if it's trying to figure out how to better move that townhome, community back or move units so that they're not, don't look so intense on Hillcrest. They've done a lot of work to already change their plans. I just, I want to be convinced that we're moving forward in the right way. I, I think that the residents that live out there deserve that. I'm glad that the commissioners recognize that. And I, I want to keep that in mind, but also not losing an opportunity to finally bring some development in, in a tough part of the county.
Hey, John, before we go, did you happen to figure out the numbers?
Yes. For R15, you would get 14 lots. For R12, you would get 20 lots.
Second to the motion? Oh, you did already? Okay. So any discussion, call a question. Pass the five to zero. Now, why don't we just take a short, five-minute break here, okay? Three, two, one, right?
Three, two, one.
Okay, we're, we're back to my break.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resoning Case Z85 of 2017, Raheem Jasani, request rezoning from GC and NRC to NRC for the purpose of a convenience store at fuel sales in Landlot 549 of the 19th District. The property is located on the southern corner of Powder Springs Road and Milford Church Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed, rezoning Case Z85? Let the record show, there's no one opposed. All right, this is the one. I'm ready when you're, Mr. Chairman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, members of the, of the commission. For the record, my name's Garvis Sams, with the law firm of Sam's Larkin, Huff &amp; Ballack. And, and I represent, in connection with this, Mr. Raheem Jasani, who is the, the applicant. Also represented after a long time, the, the, the property owner, Mrs. Holbrook, in this application. My, my client is here, Mr. Jasani is here today. Our engineer, Mr. Ken Hartele, from the Continental Group, is here today as well. The, the property at issue consists of this pin corner here, rather irregularly shaped piece of property that's located at the southeast intersection of Powder Springs Road, as you can see, and, and Milford Church Road. It's on the future land use map, as you can see, and designated and zoned as NRC. The properties that surround, at least that portion of the property is going to be developed, which is the pin corner at the top, or the property to the southwest, is totally surrounded by properties that are either zoned GC or NRC. There's the future land use map, and it shows our property outlined thereon. It shows us within a neighborhood activity center, the entirety of it. And that portion of the property that's being developed doesn't extend all the way down to the medium-density residential on the, on the other side. The, the property was originally zoned, as you can see here, in 2006. This is a 10,000-square-foot shopping center for Mrs. Holbrook at, at the time. It's, won't say horseshoe shape, but it's, it's rather odd shape because the property's got an odd configuration. But that represents 10,000 square feet of retail space. And what, what's happened since that time, it's lain undeveloped for, for 12 years. If you look directly across Milford Church Road, on the pin corner on the other side, you see a property centrally zoned to NRC. That is a shopping center that was built, and very nicely built, very nicely done. But it got caught up, I assume, in the recession. It's owned by a bank. It has set, even though developed, empty for, I'll defer to John and the commissioner, but probably at least 10 years. And it's an eyesore, and it looks absolutely horrendous. With this site today, we've differed from the site plan that you see there from 2006. Originally, we came in for staff and we filed this with the, the application. And what, what this shows is square footage of approximately 5,550, which includes, if you look to the east, that's a convenience store, but also with a drive-through component for Dunkin' Donuts or, or something of that nature. The canopies with the gas dispensers are located entirely too far removed from the property. Nevertheless, we did receive staff's recommendation for approval. And what happened, by the time we got to the planning commission hearing in December, they said, no, we don't like this. We don't like it at all. And so we've worked closely with them, not at the direction of staff, but at the direction, really, of the residents and the direction of the planning commission. And I think it's, it's a testament to that work and the, and the changes that I'm getting ready to show you, as to why we have no opposition. If you look at the drive-through component, that's gone. If you look at the building that's located with the original positioning of the C-store, that's been relocated. If you look at the canopies, that's been reduced from eight fuel dispensers to four fuel dispensers. And here's the site plan that does all that. And as you can see, all the property's been pushed up to the pin corner of Powder Springs and Milford Church. The property you see that's undeveloped on this, that is heavily and densely wooded. It will remain so until we come back, if we do, to develop that property by way of another business, to the full board for, for review. So that's not a question mark. It's simply just an unknown at this time. It, it will be developed, but I can promise you that the input from the neighbors across the street will ensure that it's not developed for a fast food restaurant or something of, of that, of that ilk. So what we did, we moved the entirety of development to track one. We reduced it from, remember, it was 10,000 square feet in '06, 5,550 in December. And now we are at 3,000. The one building we have is at 3,000 square feet. And we've added landscaping along the subject property's front, Joe Milford Church on Powder Springs. And if you look to the south, directly to the south of this building, there is a residence that is there. And as you can see, it's zoned GC, but it's being residentially used, it's non-conform and grandfathered use. We have no opposition from this neighbor. And yet, planning commission thought it'd be best for us to build a wall or a fence. So we're doing either an opaque wall or an opaque fence, eight feet in height, if that's allowed, if not six, with attendant landscaping on that. So that will fit very nicely with the plan here, which is our, our present plan. The, the interesting thing about this is that I zoned the property across Milford Church Road with the RA5. I, I end up creating a lot of the opposition that I, I run into from time to time. You got to wonder about the cyclic, almost consumable nature of this. But by, by that same token, I know those people and, and was able to get reacquainted with them. So we have embodied all the changes that you see there in a February 23rd letter, which was timely submitted. I, I, I know that you all are very sensitive to late filings on this, but Commissioner Cupid was kind enough to meet with me on Friday afternoon. And we came up with some additional, some supplements to the, the stip letter. And I'm not going over the stip letter, but I will, the, the supplement. As I mentioned, on track two, the one that shows no development on it, that will remain undisturbed, treed, vegetated, just like it is, except, as you can see, running parallel to Milford Church Road, there's a connector road between the pin corner and our aligned point of ingress and egress on Milford Church Road. So that is the only extent to which that will be developed. And that's important because our point of ingress and egress on Powder Springs is right in, right out only, but with full turning movements on the, the Milford Church Road. We have aligned that because of direction from DOT and direction from the fire and safety departments for purposes not only of ingress and egress to and from the site, but also interior maneuverability as well. So that was paragraph three we supplemented. Paragraph four is supplemented in that we have some, I think, for a convenience store, stunning architectural renderings and elevations. And you're looking at one of them here, there's one of them there and there. Commissioner Cupid was more fond of a darker color as opposed to a taupe color. As you can see, we've got brick, stack stone, and then it's, it's an ethos type of material, this sort of a taupe color. And I told the commissioner, I'd be glad to, to, to do that. So what you're seeing is not an exact replica, but the architectural style being substantially conformity to that, except for a change in color. I was embarrassed that I had to ask the commissioner how to spell taupe. But I looked it up, and she was right, and I was right, once I heard what she wanted. The hours of operation for the store is going to be 6:00 AM until 11:00 PM, which are, which are abbreviated hours. But this does still have residential areas around that and is consistent, one hour less than a store I recently did in the commissioners' district, a Pat Mellon Favor wrote, which extended till midnight. So from 6:00 to 11:00, 24/7 video monitor. And we have a photometric plan and a, and a security plan that'll be submitted during plan review. We've got a total of about 16 prohibited uses under NRC, which is on, in paragraph 11 of the original stip letter. The commissioner wanted to add to others, one, that there be no loitering, and number two, of that component, that we formulate a, a no-loitering policy for submission to the district commissioner, so she can share that with, I'm assuming, public safety department and others. And another prohibited use is gaming, gaming machines within the, the store, or anywhere around the property for that matter. Lastly, we're adding a stipulation. These people have been burned out here with the, or burned out there with respect to that really nice-looking but dilapidated building that's been constructed. And they want to know what, what's going to happen if, if this convenience store is not built. So we've built in a stipulation so that if you see fit to approve this zoning today, then if it is not, if development is not commenced within 12 months from today, then it will revert to its original zoning, which was approved by the Board of Commissioners in 2006, which is, which is an NRC zoning still, but is subject to that site plan that was submitted then. And we've proven over 12 years that that, for some reason, is not attractive to, to retailers. So we do respectfully request that, that you recognize the, I won't say massive or dramatic, but, but the substantive changes that have been made since December. We are going to build what we say we're going to build. If we don't, then obviously it, it goes back to what it was. So we, we do ask that you recommend, excuse me, we do ask that you follow staff's recommendation and that you approve this as presented today, Mr. Chairman. I think I made it on time.
Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you. Garvis, you could stay up there. I have a couple of questions. Thank you. The additional stipulations that you just read, do you have that documented?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have that documented so we can submit that to the clerk?
I, I did, to the clerk.
Okay, wonderful.
I hand-delivered it to each commissioner and via email to, to the staff members and the clerk yesterday.
Okay, excellent. Okay.
And, and those folks that were in opposition originally.
Okay.
They're showing CCs on the letter.
All right, very good. Also, because the open tract will be undeveloped, that's across from the drive-through, I would like to add in a stipulation that any uses beyond a convenience store or gas station be approved by the district commissioner.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Quick question on that. I thought Garvis said that if anything came in to be developed on that, they were going to bring it back. This is another business item.
Is that?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about track one, if anything other than a convenience store.
I'm referring to track two. Do you have that?
Yes, ma'am. It has to come back before the full board of commissioners. It's another business.
Is that stipulated?
Yes, ma'am. It's in the, it's in the original stipulation letter of February the 23rd.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at the wrong stipulation.
And by the way, you asked about making sure we had an exclusion with respect to pouring license. And I learned when I got back this weekend working on it, that was in the original February 23rd letter.
Okay, excellent. And one last stipulation I wanted to add, that there be no outside storage of materials or goods to be sold?
Typically, the ordinance allows a maximum of 1,000 square feet of outdoor, outside merchandising. In Mr., Mr. Huff's district, last month, we, we did, it was a Kroger and a fueling station and all that, and they needed more. We don't even need 1,000 square feet, but we'd like to have seasonal things such as flowers in the spring and things of that nature.
Flowers versus?
You know, ferns and, and.
I thought about ice machines being outside.
Oh, that's what you're talking about, ice machines? Yeah. Well, okay. At the commission's pleasure.
Okay. It can sometimes just get out of, out of hand. John, can you speak to the code and what limitations are there?
As far as the outdoor display of merchandise, the applicant's allowed to have two square feet of storage per one square feet, or one linear foot of wall along the store. It looks like the store is 100 feet long. Is that correct, Mr. Sams?
Yes, sir.
So he would be allowed to have 200 square feet of outdoor storage.
200 square feet.
Outdoor merchandise, 200 square feet. It, it's not a big, it's not a big deal. Just like to have the opportunity from time to time to do something that's in keeping with the change of seasons. It's, it's not a non-starter or a deal killer one way or the other.
I'm, I'm debating on this. 200, you said 200 versus 10 square feet? Sometimes we just see in some of these areas, you'll see different corrug, sometimes you can see corrugated material that's outside in the front. So I'm really just trying to limit it getting messy in front of the convenience store.
Well, as you can see by virtue of, of course, now, anytime.
Well, how about this? Let's, let's limit, so let's speak specifically to that. Let's limit outdoor merchandise to, or outdoor storage to merchandise of goods and no corrugated material to be stored in front of the property.
And that's fine. What is, what is corrugated material?
Boxes, boxes.
Oh, 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 sure. Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I get that. Boxes, could you spell that?
We want you to look up corrugated and tell us next.
Moving along here.
I used to work in manufacturing. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Commissioner, may I ask a clarifying?
Yes.
As far as the, the pouring of alcoholic beverages as a permitted use, can we add, of course, they've got to apply for the license?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
No, it's, it's not a permitted use.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Okay. Okay, cool. Then, then they wouldn't be applying, would they?
No, no. Not, not for that.
Okay. So with that, I'd like to approve Application Z85 from GC to NRC, subject to planning commission, excuse me, not, subject to the letter submitted by the applicant on February 23rd and a supplemental letter delivered on March 19th, 2018. Also subject to limited storage to merchandise of goods only and no corrugated material. All other staff comments and recommendations, none otherwise in conflict, to be included.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question? Pass the five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Cupid?
Is that Mrs. Lois Holbrook? Is that, how, how is she?
She's doing fine, thank you very much.
Well, next time she's here, please give her my regards.
I'll do that.
She's a wonderful lady.
I'll do that. My, my, my law partner, Parks F, had something in Carterville yesterday, and her son-in-law, Randy Manino, said that it's a good thing that he was hearing his application. his application yesterday and things were right today. So, but I will tell you, sir.
Yeah, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Resoning case Z14, EAH Acquisitions LLC. Request rezoning from R20 and LRO to RM12 for the purpose of townhomes and landlot A20 of the 17th District. Property is located on the east side of Beach Haven Trail. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z14? Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z14? Let the director show us no one opposed.
We can only ask, we can only ask that once, if that's okay.
So maybe ask it a third time. Please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, good morning. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant and owner in this application for rezoning. Uh, the applicant is EAH Acquisitions. EAH stands for Edward Andrews Homes. Uh, this is their acquisition company, uh, in this application for rezoning. Uh, this is properties consisting of almost two and a half acres located on Beach Haven Trail. Uh, it's currently zoned R20 and LRO, uh, and we are seeking rezoning to the RM12 category, uh, for, uh, detached homes, uh, in this, uh, particular area, uh, off of 285. And I'm first going to ask if we can go to the aerial, yeah, GIS that we can provide so folks can see. And I want to kind of give you an overview of, uh, where this property is located. Uh, if you're not familiar with Beach Haven Trail, it's just a sh, a short little road that runs, uh, off of, uh, 285 and Cumberland Parkway. If you want to kind of scoot that back a little bit for me, if you would, please. Uh, but this particular area, as you can see even by the up, up close, or zoom out, I'm sorry. As you can even see by the up, up close part of it, uh, is, uh, joined on two sides by RM12, same category that we are seeking. You can also now see position wise, this is, uh, just, uh, east of 285, just south of Cumberland Parkway. Uh, you can see it's surrounded by O and I zoning, RM12 zonings. Uh, what you see to the right, uh, if you continue to go east, you see all of that R20, uh, and R30. That's property that's on the other side of the railroad track. Uh, so that's a, a, a main railroad track that comes down through there that kind of puts a delineation between really the intensity that surrounds just off of 285, uh, and then, uh, the residential area there, uh, to the east of the railroad track. And that's been maintained as a, almost a hard line through that area for many, many years. And you can see all of the RM12 and O and I and GC and all of the, the different intense categories you would associate with, uh, the area just off of 285. And in fact, that area is, uh, reflected in your land use plan as such. This is actually an area, uh, that's within the Regional Activity Center. It's within a rack. Uh, uh, as you can see, just as you get to the edge of that rack there, uh, it's also, this property is within a sub-designation within the Regional Activity Center. So we have a Regional Activity Center, uh, which obviously encourages the highest intensity and density of development in Cobb County. And then it's further sub-designated, uh, as high-density residential. This property is within that Regional Activity Center, which would encourage densities, uh, residential densities of up to 12 units per acre. And that's what we have proposed, uh, in this application, uh, for rezoning is a residential project of up to 12 units per acre, uh, at, at this location. So I want to turn now, uh, to the, uh, site plan and kind of go through what I think are some of the things that make this, uh, per project and proposal and application a little bit unique, uh, and I think something that'll be very positive and very welcomed, uh, in this area.
Uh, turning now to the site plan. Uh, now we're focused in on Beach, Beach Haven Trail here. Uh, again, this is the RM12 adjacent, uh, to this property, RM12 across the street and the O and I on the other side, uh, and surrounding on these two sides. Uh, what is proposed here typically under RM12, what we see is apartments. That's multifamily zoning. Uh, we'll see attached housing of multifamily, uh, under RM12. That's typically what we see. However, what is proposed here is actually detached for sale homes, uh, that's being proposed here, um, in this, in this arrangement. And that is we have detached homes. They'll be front-facing, uh, here off of Beach Haven Trail. Uh, these are then served by, uh, uh, rear alleys. Uh, for these units, as you can see, these are rear alleys here. So these are front-facing to Beach Haven and then front-facing into this central green area that'll be highly landscaped, uh, heavily man, landscaped, heavily manicured, uh, central green area. Uh, and again, um, these homes then face out to that central green so that when you drive in, what you're seeing is the fronts and sides of homes, uh, with alleys that then feed those. Uh, but what you're also seeing from a unique standpoint or conceptual standpoint is RM12 allows attached housing. And what we have done here and what Edward Andrews Homes has seen is rather than, uh, doing this plan as a townhome development, which you might expect, where you have, where you'd have attached homes and where these building, where these buildings would then end up being a single building of attached, uh, units, is detach those. And in doing so, the concept here is really detaching townhomes to create value and price premium. Uh, what Edward, Edward Andrews Homes has seen, uh, in other projects and has seen in metropolitan Atlanta, especially the northern side of metropolitan Atlanta, is that, uh, when they have townhome developments, the in-units, uh, of those townhome developments receive a price premium from the market and from home buyers who want to live and choose to live in townhomes, and that's a, a, a choice that they are making. Uh, what they've also seen and what they've also heard from those same home buyers is, well, can you just detach them? We're, we're good with having the dense, density. That's what we're expecting, uh, areas where townhomes such as this would be, uh, welcomed and would be a positive, um, impact from a development standpoint. Uh, the, the market is asking for that. And in fact, when they have seen that in other locations, uh, where you have, um, detach, what is essentially could be called detached townhomes or detached homes, but on very, very small lots, uh, there's a price premium that's obtained from that, from just simply not having the shared wall, and it's a desired segment of the housing market and a desired option for the home buyer. And that's the type of, uh, arrangement, uh, that we have proposed in this application is simply to detach those homes. The issue with that from a zoning perspective is that, uh, Cobb County zoning code does not have this type of arrangement in its code. RM12 allows for attached townhomes. And if we in fact, and we in fact did do a plan where we did this as RM12 for 29 homes, uh, and they were attached. It was just a standard townhome development and design, uh, that you would see. But it's also one that you see over and over again from a townhome design standpoint. Uh, that proposal, uh, would not have variances associated with it. It would meet the RM12, uh, code requirements. However, once you detach under RM12, the detaching of the, of the homes triggers a different set of requirements under RM12. And in fact, it turns you then to meeting the RA5 detached home requirements, 7,000 square foot lots, greater setbacks and so forth and so on, which would not allow for this type of, uh, arrangement and this type of design. So the variances that were, that are listed, uh, and that are being requested here are directly related to simply detaching them. It's not related to anything other than simply detaching these homes, um, and having detached homes. And in this instance, we've gone even further and we've also, uh, instituted a stipulation and condition that these are for sale homes and there'll be a 10% rental limitation in the declarations of covenants and restrictions. So this is detached homes and this is a situation which is, uh, offered as an option and a very desirable option for homes. And let me show you what these actually will look like. Uh, these homes are built in, uh, what Edward Andrews calls it Southern Cottage Style. Uh, and what they're being, uh, designed, uh, uh, for, as you can see, uh, these are front-facing. The garages are to the rear. Uh, this is how you would view it from Beach Haven Trail. There'll be extensive landscaping along that frontage. Uh, but this is the type of architecture that provides a Southern Cottage look is what they call it. But what it is, as you can see, is a, a use of bright, uh, white colors and, uh, some darker shades, uh, that creates more of a, an attractive look, uh, certainly an aesthetic look from that standpoint.
In a situation like this, we understand the uniqueness of what is being requested, uh, in terms of a RM12 zoning for detached homes, um, that requires, uh, several variances. But that's because of the way that ordinance is designed. You go here in Marietta directly behind the, where we sit right here today and go down Lemon Street, what you will see is a newer development. It's just, um, it's been built now. It's been improved. It's gone vertical. And what you'll see there right behind this building are detached homes that are built very closely together. Uh, the reason is because in a very urban, very dense environment that you find, like in a downtown area, like in a regional activity center where this property is located, that type of, uh, housing option, that type of home, is a desirable choice, should be an option. In Cobb County, we don't have that option. This, this type of, bless you, this type of, uh, development and design, uh, it's not something that belongs anywhere in Cobb County. Uh, but it certainly should have a home in a regional activity center that's been specifically designated as high-density residential. When you are in that type of urban dense environment, having this type of option for homes, especially when you understand that it obtains that price premium, we think is desirable, uh, and we believe is, is certainly justified from that standpoint. We have a stipulation letter dated March 14th that lays all of what I just, uh, presented to you out in great detail. Uh, we've received the recommendation from staff as well as the recommendation from the planning commission, and we respectfully request your approval of the rezoning application today. Thank you.
Mr. Rock? Um, all right. Uh, Kevin, have, have you seen DOT's comments?
We have. They revised them twice, I believe.
Oh, I know, but the, the revisions still call for the decelane, I believe. Or have you revised them since that?
It's a taper.
Okay. Cause yeah, there, I don't have that one. So, all right, let's have DOT come up and tell me what the revised revision to the revision.
We worked very closely with DOT, uh, on those recommendations. And so their final ones were.
Yeah, because your site plan doesn't show the revision letter that I had. Right.
Yeah, I believe their new site plan showed the taper and we were fine with that. We met with the applicant. And, um, we're fine with a taper instead of a full decel.
Okay. And now the sidewalks, I thought, are we not, I, I know I'm putting money, sidewalk money in sidewalks on Beach Haven.
The sidewalks are still a requirement.
No, but I mean, I thought the county was already building sidewalks on Beach Haven.
Uh, we asked for him to coordinate with Karen, the project manager on that.
Okay. So basically what you're asking for that is for them to pay for the sidewalks in front of their development. That'll be part of the sidewalks that we're putting in.
If possible, that would be great. Yes.
Well, now I'm just trying to clarify because I know that in, in my discussions with DOT about sidewalks, Beach Haven is the one that we're doing this year.
Uh, usually either the app, the developer builds it and we work around it.
Right. I just, I'm just trying to clarify. And I think I'm going to get my clarification right now.
Amy Diaz, DOT. I've had some discussions with Karen about that specifically, and she asked me if it was possible if they could pay a fee in lieu of if we go in before they do. And I told her that that deal hadn't been worked out as yet, but that would be something that typically we would do.
Okay. So we'll put that in the stip, uh, in, in the conditions for the approval that, um, either the sidewalks are a fee in lieu of if the county gets there first.
If their development goes in first and the sidewalks will already be there, but if we go in first, then they can pay a fee in lieu of.
Okay. That works. All right. Thanks. Um, all right. Uh, so that was the sidewalk issue. The, the next one is the variances. And I think, um, Kevin talked about that, that there would be no variances if this was done in a typical manner, that, and the buildings were attached. Um, and one of those big ones that I received in some opposition letters was about stormwater and the impervious. Um, the impervious, if the units were joined, there would not be an issue with the impervious. The impervious variance is because they're individual lots when it goes to 70%. The overall impervious for the entire site is no different. Um, it would not require variance if they were attached. Um, the other one, and Rock, you want to come up? Um, I, in the letter I received, um, from a homeowner on Orchard Inn was about, uh, safety with the only six feet between the buildings. And see, you want to talk about that?
Uh, I'm Rock, uh, represent the Cobb County Fire Marshal. Um, in regards to six feet, we are not the enforcers of the, the 10-foot minimum separation without fire-rated construction, but, uh, the building code is. But these will be required to have one-hour firewalls on the exterior.
And you and I talked earlier before the meeting started that, um, normally what would happen is the fire department would look at pulling a hose between the buildings and then that would determine access. Um, and what you told me was that in this particular case, you would just, uh, treat it as if the spaces weren't there and they would have to have the 100 feet.
150-foot hose pool, right. We'll look at them as a cluster. So we'll measure the hose pool around the buildings.
Right. So then, um, fire comments said that you all didn't have any problems with it.
Right. The, we're still working with the, with the engineering on the turning radiuses because the roadways are 20 feet. So the inside turning radius movement, um, especially in the back of the development.
Right.
Is, is a little more tricky than if we had 24-foot.
Right. And that, that's going to be worked out at a plan review.
Right. Yes, sir. We're still working.
Right. Because, uh, they have to meet your requirements before they can build anything. All right. Thanks.
Okay, last question?
I have a question. Are sprinklers required or will these have sprinklers?
No, ma'am. Sprinklers are, are not required. It's a three-story unit. And even if it was, it had an occupiable attic space, it would not be required because it still falls underneath the International Residential Code. If it was four stories, it would go into the International Building Code and then it would be required to be sprinkled.
Okay.
But they.
Question is, uh, as the, uh, Mr. Moore stated, these are all over Marietta and they have their own fire department. Is there an issue with the distance between the buildings? Uh, or is it just because our code requires something between the buildings for fire department?
You talking about as far as sprinkler systems in the city?
For you getting between the buildings to put out a fire. I mean, how does Marietta do it? That's what I'm asking. I mean, they have the buildings just like this all around here. And, uh, I'm assuming their fire department had to approve it. So.
Well, there's, first thing, the city of Marietta has a sprinkler ordinance. So all these in the city of Marietta are going to sprinkle. Be, you know, they're going to be equipped with fire sprinkler system.
Well, that solves that problem right away.
That, that's one thing. So we, we, we would support your recommendation, uh, or your requirement based on zoning to sprinkle these. Um, that, that's one thing. Um, the other thing, I'm not sure if, you know, they can still measure the hose pool around the buildings just like we are. Now, you know, that design and in reality, are you going to go out there and you're going to see hose stretched between these buildings when they're fighting a, a grass fire or something in the back?
Sure.
Um, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, we're not, you know, we don't carry tape measures and say, oh, this is six feet. Uh, we can't pull a, a hose through there. But you, you understand.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure.
It's designed versus.
I'm just trying to make sure we're up to speed and that we, I mean, to me, these are much nicer than attached ones, the way they look. And we need to work on our zoning to, to allow that. And that means you need to figure out how we need to do that as well.
Yes, sir. This will be, I, I guess this is the first for, for all the county departments. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Uh, one last question, Kevin. Um, because the opposition letter I got talked about the air conditioning units. Is that what's going to be in that six-feet space?
He's going to climb over the air conditioners now?
That's why I'm asking.
They, uh, AC, the AC will either, they're either, will be between or they'll be in the, in the rear. Just depends.
Depends on what?
That's the two locations. Well, not in the front.
Well, no, I know they're not in the front. My, my question, my question for asking is.
Sure.
Um, if both units, AC units are in the middle, then there's no way that anybody's going to get through there.
You wouldn't put them on the same side. Yeah. You, you'd only have one in there. You wouldn't put them both in the same. If they're, if they're being designed for that, then the, each one would be on the right side of the house. So you'd have only one unit in there. And from a hose pool standpoint, this is all designed like, like, uh, Mr. Tolder said.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm going through, I'm going through a list of things that was in one of the letters, opposition letters I got.
You would not have two in the same spacing.
Well, you want one I get done with the stipulation. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. I guess my question is, I understand your logic, but what bothers me is similar to the issue about the OSCEs. Limit lot size are going to go from 7,000 to 1650. So what we're doing here is we're, we're coming in another, we're, why don't we just make these FSTs? All right?
It, it doesn't change the issue.
But the issue is that we have all these waivers and these waivers are basically backing us into another zoning code other than RA.
Well, no, they're not. The, the issue, Mr. Chairman, is RM12 basically doesn't contemplate individual lots.
Right.
And the county does not have a code that contemplates individual lots like this. And, and that's, so the problem is the variance is purely because, um, this is, something's being proposed that the code doesn't address. If, if you, if you connected all these together, there would be no variances on lot size.
Right.
There would be no variances on. There would be no variances on impervious.
Right.
There were basically no variances, period.
Right.
And so what happens is, because the county code doesn't have a zoning category that addresses this type of product, which, as was mentioned, the City of Marietta right behind us has, there is no way for an applicant to apply to build something like this because we don't have a county code to do it. There is no zoning category that would allow you to build this.
I, I hear all that, but A, we just went through to update the ordinances. Should at least brought this forward as a new proposed code, alright?
Well, if I had known about this, I would have.
Let me finish, I'm just saying, but, but you knew, okay? Yeah, I know, I'm not, I'm just, it's a rhetorical question, okay?
Good.
I'm not asking for an answer.
Can't propose code.
Yeah, exactly. The point I'm making here is that what we're doing is we're creating a new zoning code responding to a situation that doesn't exist on our zoning codes, and we're creatively making this fit that because we don't have someone that complies with that. And I just.
Well, so the question, I guess the question would be, so what you're saying is, if the zoning code doesn't allow some new design, style, or some new products that's out on the market, then don't come to Cobb County with it.
No, what I'm saying is, is we have a process for that. We annually update our zoning codes to reflect the new, and we do this all the time, and we have, we created all kinds of zoning codes over the last 25 years.
Right, but a lot of them, a lot of them come when a product like this comes along, and it's like, I mean, until, until, you know, what, a month ago when Kevin first came and showed this to me, I'd not seen anything like this. So, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I think it's important that if, if attached under a normal RM 12 zoning, that you would still have variances, then I would have a problem with it because I would say that you're overbuilding and you're trying to get too much on the property. But since the variances are totally a result of these being separated, I don't have as much problem with it. And plus, the other developments around it, it's in the rack, it's got RM 12 around it, it's currently a church. So, I mean, the intent, you know, although it's zoned R20, it's a church, so it's, it's kind of already a commercial use, so which is a higher use. And as was mentioned, in this area, the railroad track has always been considered the dividing line between the lower density and findings and the higher density in this part.
Well, I, when I first saw the, saw the map, the site map, okay, this is all RM 12, no problem, but then I started looking at all the waivers, like, this isn't, this isn't complying with this on the record, so.
Well, I personally think it looks a lot better than RM 12 would look attached. And the fact that the variances are basically variances because we don't have any zoning category that fits this doesn't mean we shouldn't approve it and look forward in the next round to come up with such a zoning category, because I'd much rather see these as I would attached townhomes. So I don't think we need to worry about the variance because as Commissioner Hahn explained, the variances are only as a result that we don't have anything like this. But, so, I think it's a great plan.
Okay.
And echoing that, this is creative development, and I was surprised to see similar development like this in Smyrna.
Correct.
We had a development in the district maybe two or three years ago that were supposed to be townhomes. We blew it apart, but we kept the required setbacks. And the side setback of them was wide, but you have a much narrower unit. You just basically just blew apart the townhome and fit it in the code. And I must say, from a visual perspective, it just, it, it doesn't look the best. I think it does look better when it's a narrower product. Yeah, I can go either way on what the chairman is saying, or whether for the honor saying about fitting the code or putting the code in place first, but I just know from a visual perspective, when you see this type of product, having a narrower setback is much more attractive. Also, what I don't see facilitated in the code unless someone else has observed this is what allows you to have more street-attractive development. Because our front setbacks pull the development so far from the street, it encourages driveways, and it doesn't really add to, the trend is to have more walkable, street ornate communities where you can just walk from the sidewalk up to your home. And so you're automatically gonna see a variance for that. And I don't know if you create a whole zoning code for it, but I think we should encourage development that helps with the aesthetic along the street. So I propose that we take a look at that at some point without having to acquire a variance because there's the traditional rule that says variance only when there's a hardship. And that doesn't allow us to be as creative as we can be when it comes to creating an attractive product.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, if you want to make a motion.
Sure.
Alright, I make a motion that we approve Z14, subject to, well, first off, to the RM 12 category, subject to the stipulation letter and site plan submitted by Kevin Moore dated March 14th. All planning commission comments not otherwise in conflict. The revised DOT comments that reflect the, what'd you call?
Taper.
Taper. Reflect the taper. All others, staff comments not otherwise in conflict. Air conditioning units, only one buildings units to be placed between two buildings to ensure that there is space for a fire department to get through. And then on the, the stipulation that refers to, and I don't have the number in front of me, the landscaping that besides the county arborist, it'd be approved by the district commissioner. That'd be in my motion.
Second?
Second.
Second, just a.
Yeah. Alright, and Commissioner Burrow, the Commissioner Cupid.
And due to space, it may be difficult, but if they're on the side, can they be screened? Or either required that they be in the rear?
Yeah, I mean, just, okay, so that they not be visible from Beach Haven, okay? I'm more concerned about Beach Haven than the rest, but yeah, that they be screened.
And if possible, in the rear.
Yeah, okay, and if possible, in the rear.
Because you're limited on space there anyhow.
Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, and just echo in sentiment share on the board that from a community development perspective, that we take a look at a code that can better facilitate these types of development.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna do that after we just asked staff to come forward with the zoning category or something that would, in the future, allow this type of zoning.
Any other comments? Call a question. Passes four to one with the chairman of opposition.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Okay, moving into land use permits today. LUP 2, Richard and Robin Delayama request a land use permit for the purpose of allowing more unrelated adults than permitted by the code in Land Lot 22 of the 20th District. Property is located on the northwest side of Hickory Grove Port, west of Hickory Grove Trail. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for LUP 2, Richard and Robin Delayama? Is there anyone here opposed to this case? There are four, four people opposed, Mr. Chairman. Would the opposition please come forward, be sworn in? Well, there's no one here to present it, so the board can, can hear what they want to say, and then the board can make a motion to.
Burrow, drive this one, okay?
Um, the applicant is not here. Do we want to hold this and call her to come, or do we want to just proceed?
Per the, per the code, you can dismiss with prejudice, reject, or continue at your discretion.
Do you want to speak, or do you want me to just make a motion?
Well, once, once you make the motion, they can't speak.
I know. Okay, come forward. You have 10 minutes collectively.
Okay, I just have one thing to say.
Okay, just let us know who you are.
I'm Ronald Woodruff, I'm an attorney in Marietta. I have to totally rearrange my schedule to be here. I would respectfully request that the panel dismiss with prejudice this matter.
Thank you. Okay, sir.
I am Jim Woodruff, and Ron and I are both residents of the subdivision in question, Hickory Grove. We do have petition signatures that we'd like to get into the record. And I might as well sort of reiterate the comments I had last time when the, I guess it's the planning board unanimously denied this request. Our subdivision was really hard-hit by the recession. A lot of people lost their homes, so there's a lot of absentee landlords in the development now. But the subdivision is coming back, and there's a lot of homeowners still there and even renters that have an interest in having a good community. In this case, it wouldn't have been a problem, and we wouldn't be here if there hadn't been problems. But even if there'd been no problems, we certainly don't want to set a precedent to where these other landlords want the same variance because the residents that care about the community and the homeowners that are trying to restore their lost equity in their homes don't want to live in a subdivision of boarding houses. And so with consideration for all the people that have a vested interest in that community, I would hope you would deny a request like this.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Again, please let us know who you are.
Hi, yes, I'm Curtis Siskerman, and I'm a resident of the adjoining property, homeowner, resident of the adjoining property. And I would just like to please request that you deny this application as it has really become a nuisance situation. I, I, my understanding is that the zoning application was made in response to complaints made on the property, and I would like to go on the record to say that that was not me. So I'm obviously not the only cranky neighbor with a problem with the situation. But it has really become a nuisance situation. My biggest concern at the time right now is with the number of vehicles parked on the property and the fact that there's just simply not enough parking for that. And so the residents, despite having been recommended that they not park in the right of way, continue to park in the right of way. And our houses are close enough to gather that my concern would be that in the case of an emergency such as a fire at that particular property, that fire services, emergency services could not access the property. If there were a fire, my house is close enough, I'm concerned that my house might also go up in flames, and if the fire department is blocked from getting into the property and putting it out, I'm very concerned about that situation. Anyway, other problems that are going on there are just nuisance kind of situations, bad neighbor kind of situation, you know, trash in the yard, some destruction of the adjoining property between us. And it's just not been a very good situation. So I just request that you please uphold the zoning standard here and deny the requests that they've placed for the zoning variance.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. Yes, this case was a result of code enforcement violation, and we do have a single-family dwelling unit code that allows no more than two unrelated adults. And I believe there were five here, and from the planning commission, I believe the applicant stated there are now four unrelated, but it still doesn't meet the requirements. With regard to the parking, I don't believe that was a code submitted to code enforcement as a violation, but the 390 square foot, one vehicle per 390 square foot, and four, no more than four outside. John, do you know what is allowed on this property? But how many total with the 390? Because I couldn't find it in the staff comments. But regardless, they're, they can't have more than four cars outside, and if they're blocking the right of way or the driveways of the neighbors, that needs to be reported. So, and I, I agree with the opposition. I do not want to set a precedent for single-family dwelling and platted subdivisions where the code is no more than two unrelated. So I will make a motion to deny this application. And because I don't know if there's students or, or friends living there of the four that are unrelated, I'll give them 60 days to vacate or to come into compliance. And that still means they're subject to parking and other code violations. If there's trash in the yard or whatever, they're still have to comply with other code. They just have 60 days for, to come into compliance with no more than two unrelated adults.
Okay, so we have a second, any discussion? Commissioner Cupid?
Just briefly, I'm willing to support you because of all the code enforcement issues. I know we've had opportunity to listen to applicants when they've had extenuating circumstances where we have permitted it. So I don't want to give the impression that I'm not amenable to, to the facts or different circumstances of those before us, that the person isn't here today and the situation does seem to be a challenge to those who are living around it right now.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. Oh, sure, go ahead.
I would just like to say thank you for taking off work to be here, and thanks for your time.
Mr. Chairman, Board, the first item we're gonna hear today for other business is item number 10, which is to consider a stipulation amendment for Duncan Land Investments LLC regarding rezoning application Z112 of 2016 for property located on the western side of Blackwell Road at Blackwell Place, and on the southern side of Northwoods Drive in Land Lot 308 of the 16th District. By way of background, the subject property was rezoned in 2016 to R15 for a seven-lot subdivision. One of the items in the letter of stipulation stated the exterior materials on the fronts and sides of the homes. The applicant would like to amend stipulation number four to read, "Front elevations of homes shall contain bricks, stones, stack stones, cedar shakes, board and batten, or combinations thereof. Side elevations of homes shall consist of a brick-water table with hardy plank siding or a compatible product to finish it off. If approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect. Staff would ask the board to open up the public hearing and consider the proposed stipulation amendment." Is there anyone here opposed to this item? The, there's no one opposed, Mr. Chairman, and the applicant is present if there's any questions.
Mr. Rock? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, John, I thought we were, in the stip letter for Mr. Duncan dated 4/21/17, item number four, we're replacing board and batten with hardy plank. And then any lots facing Blackwell Road, specifically lots one and seven, must be a combination thereof. Is that your understanding?
That was my understanding, Commissioner.
Okay. Then I just want to be clear, because when you said the hardy plank with the water table.
On sides.
Except for the ones facing the, that you, that are visible from Blackwell Road. Okay. In the interior. Okay, so I will make a motion that we, well, what if, what is staff's recommendation?
Commissioner Burrow, staff would recommend the board approve the request subject to deletion of stipulation number four in the letter dated April 21st, 2016, or 2017, and replace it with the language that's contained in the background information in the item. The sides of the. The sides of the houses facing Blackwell Road for lots one and seven be approved by district commissioner, and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Okay. The only thing I would change is any lots facing Blackwell Road, specifically one and seven.
Okay.
In case there are any additional ones that will be seen from, from Blackwell Road.
Second. Okay, we have a second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, Board, item number 11 is to consider amending the stipulations for Nick and Anna Letzos regarding SLEP 4 of 2010 for property located in Landlot 660 of the 16th District. The property is located at the northwestern intersection of Canton Road and Westerly Way. By way of background, the subject property was rezoned to Community Retail Commercial with a special land use permit for used car lot in 2010. One of the stipulations established a maximum time limit for the used car sales to operate on this lot, which was three years from the issuance of a business license. The time limit has been extended twice through other business, once in 2012, once in 2015. The timeframe for the current extension expires April 21st, 2018. The owners would like to either eliminate the time stipulation or modify it to tie into the sale or redevelopment of the property, or extend the timeframe another 36 months. If approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect, and staff would ask the board commissioners to conduct, to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed stipulation amendment. Earlier, there were four people here in opposition and four people in support. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward, be sworn in.
Were any of the four that were in favor of it still here? Do you want to speak?
They may, Mr. Chairman, they're my clients and their daughter.
Okay, all right, okay, I just want to make sure that we accounted for them, that's all. All right, Mr. Samms?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, good morning. Once again, may it please the board of commissioners, for the record, my name is Garvis Samms, a law firm of Samms, Lark and Huff and Valley, and I, I've had the pleasure of representing Nick and Anna Letzos for in excess of three decades. Mr. and Mrs. Letzos are here today with their daughter, you don't have to stand, but raise your hand, see right there. They first raised their hand in opposition, they didn't mean to do that, but it was just an inadvertent thing, but obviously they're not in opposition. This is a file that I have had open, I've known them for the three decades, but I've had a file open on them and this property since 1988. When, I'm going to be short, this sounds like I'm really revving up to have a long one here, but when I, when I, when I first met them, they had this property on the west side of Canton Road, and the three of us went out, incidentally with Judy Williams at the time, who's on the planning commission, and the land flies fairly flat, there's now a racetrack on one side of it, and then across Westerly Way is a subdivision called Chimney Cottages, which I zoned. And it looked like a great place for a shopping center. And so we did rezon in 1989 a 31,000 square foot shopping center for this, for this site, which is on the southern portion of Canton Road. Obviously, we had great plans in hand, but, and most of you are too young to recall this, but there was a recession in the, in 1990, 91, 92, nothing like the Great Recession we had a few years back, but nevertheless, a recession, to put this in a situation so that it didn't come to fruition in terms of development. In fact, if you look at this section of Canton Road, for some reason, I don't know if it's radioactive or what, but it just hadn't developed like we, the Letzos', and I think even the civic activists and, and the various commissioners along the way, Sam Owens, Timbley, Commissioner Burrow, it's just simply waiting to take off, and hopefully that's going to happen. Commissioner Burrow was kind enough to grant a rezoning of this property back in, in 2010, and it is zone CRC. Okay, I'm sorry, not 2010, whatever year you were here, we got it, we got it granted for the first time, and, and that was not only a rezoning, but also it was granting of a special land use permit. Special land use permit was, was in opposition, so to speak, to the rezoning, because the rezoning didn't allow car-centric uses, the special land use permit allowed for the sale of previously owned vehicles, and the commissioner's been kind enough to, or the US board had been kind enough to extend that. The original time, three years, 36 months later, another time, 36 months later, another time, and we're still seeing a situation along the corridor where the development has not kept pace with the development on the northern end of the corridor. They have numerous permitted uses under CRC that could put this property to, it just, it just hadn't, hadn't come to fruition. So what we are asking for today is that the stipulation, or the stipulations regarding the special land use permit either be eliminated to allow this special land use permit, as most special land use permits are, to proceed in perpetuity, which, no, that's not going to happen. In the alternative, we'd like an extension of another 36 months, which I understand from a political perspective is not going to happen. But what we are asking for, and what we do represent today, is that these folks have been good stewards of the property, they've been unfortunate to have had some tenants who have taken advantage of them from time to time. Also, the property owners around them, the neighbor behind them has, has built a three-hole golf course on their property, the pecan trees, the cropped pecan trees they've had have been, have been used by the neighbors, and the property they have has become a dog park. All to say, they've watched their property be utilized by themselves, but misused by some of their neighbors. So we would ask for whatever consideration that you can grant to Mr. and Mrs. Letzos. They own, used to own a Greek restaurant in Atlanta, they made this investment in 1982 when they bought it, rezoned in 88. It is a profit center, but it happens to be beside Social Security, their, their sole profit center. So we would ask whatever consideration that you can give, knowing the broad latitude that you have to do so, with respect to extending this special land use permit to accommodate their existing business on site. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Brown?
Good afternoon, for the record, I'm Carol Brown with Canton Road Neighbors. There are a number of people from multiple neighborhoods in the area that have asked that this request for an extension of the SLUP be denied. This was first rezoned, this, this has been basically used for automotive, at least going back to 2008, at which point in 2009, Z36, it was rezoned, actually it came in as GC, but was deleted to CRC, which still was not appropriate in the NAC land use. One of the main reasons for the Canton Road quarter planning was to get rid of so many GC automotive use type rezonings that just were all up and down the highway. And actually, in that original Z36 rezoning, some of those items removed reflected that intent, removal of, or prohibition of automobile, truck and trailer lease and rental facilities, automobile and truck and service facilities, automobile paint and body repair shops, automobile parking lots or garages, automobile upholstery shops. So that pretty much tells, you know, that this was not desired. On the other hand, CRC allows many, many uses, among them animal hospitals, eating establishments, banks, professional offices, community retail, including bakery, florist, beauty shop, clinic, and fitness centers, and those are just a very few of them, professional offices. This particular property is a corner lot on one of Cobb's main arterials, it has many, many uses other than used vehicle sales. The first SLUP granting use of this was in 2010, and it took them two years to get the business license. So they've had, they had three years of operation on that SLUP, it was then renewed with grudging, reluctant support from the nearby neighbors in 2015, and now they are before you again asking for an extension. There have been code violations, and while the little automotive lot wasn't so bad, currently there is a used truck facility on the adjacent lot. There was a large inoperative semi-tractor trailer on that lot in violation of the original letter of stipulation, which has now been removed. There are heavy industrial-type trucks parked on that small site, it totally out of place with anything adjacent to residential neighborhoods. And if there are people in the area using the backside of their land as a golf course or a dog park, I'm not aware of it, but I am aware that there is community opposition to an extension for 36 months by an affirmative vote of this board. I actually reached out to the family and sent them a list of uses on the CRC zoning. I provided them with the telephone number at the request of a local restaurant that is now no longer on Canton Highway. It isn't that Mr. and Mrs. Letzos aren't good neighbors, as somebody may have stated, it's that the tenants have had issues, and the Letzos' have lived so far away from this, they have trouble managing it. We would love to see a restaurant, or a florist, or a bank, or a vet, anything on this property, whether they sell it for redevelopment or lease it. But we would just respectfully ask that you deny this request for a SLUP and grant them whatever time you deem appropriate for the remaining operation on the site, to provide them some income, and just really would like to see them actively pursue other opportunities for this excellent location. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow?
Yes. This did come in for a special land use permit in 2010 for three years, and was renewed by the board in 2012, and then again in 2015. And before I make a motion, I would like to submit a packet including letter dated March 15th from Ms. Carol Brown, Canton Road Neighbors, letter dated March 5th from Jamie Shu with pictures of the, some of the violations of the code. And she is a resident of Chimney Cottages and was here this morning for the early head count, but had to leave. And then several pages of violations, code enforcement violations on this property from 2010 to present. One is recent as January of this year, and I'd like to submit those to the clerk for the record. In speaking with the applicant's attorney, I was willing to give them six months to vacate if this is approved as a denial, but because of the hardship for their livelihood, sole source of income, or besides Social Security, whatever Mr. Garvis Samms was referring to, I've spoken with the neighbors and have agreed to give them nine months or till the end of this year, December 31st, to vacate as a car lot. So I just wanted to express the reasoning behind that before I make the motion. Pardon? What is staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, Board, the staff would recommend the board commissioners deny the request.
Okay. I'm ready to make the motion. Okay, I would like to make a motion that we deny other business 11 with the following conditions: Vacate the car lot by December 31st, 2018; Remove the rusted truck within 10 days, which I understand is now gone; No parking on the grass; And any future requests for a special land use permit must come back to the BOC for full rezoning hearing, not as another business item.
We have a, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Any comments? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, Board, item number 13 is to consider a site plan and stipulation amendment for Bass Development Corp. regarding rezoning application Z14 of 2013 for property located at the southeastern intersection of Wesley Chapel Road and Chapel Heights Drive in Landlots 256, 321 of the 16th District. Subject property was rezoned to R15 in 2013 for subdivision. In 2016, the property came back through other business to amend the site plan and stipulations to facilitate development. This amendment relates to the house on lot number 15, which is at the southeastern corner of Wesley Chapel Road and Chapel Heights Drive. The applicant has constructed a driveway within the 15-foot landscape buffer area along Wesley Chapel Road. This 15-foot landscape easement area was approved as part of the 2016 other business item. The applicant would like to keep the driveway where it is so cars can pull easily in and out of the garage. If approved, all previous conditions would remain in effect. The staff would ask the board commissioners to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed site plan and stipulation amendment. Is there anyone here opposed to this item? That the record shows there are three people opposed, and the applicant is present. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward, be sworn in.
I'm the developer of Chapel Heights Subdivision. My builder was Tom Bass, he built the house here. They asked us why we had to put the driveway on this side. The lot had 20 feet of fall from left, or from right to left on this lot, so basically driveway on the other side would not have been a possibility. They asked us why they wouldn't put a front entry in. Houses in this neighborhood are from sevens to eight hundreds, so this is one of the reasons why we couldn't get the driveway in on that side. So, you know, with side entry instead of a front entry, okay? We wanted the side entry. So we could remove the driveway, it'd only give the people 20 feet to get into the garage, which would almost have been a possibility, so, and then that would take, take away from the cell of the house. So we're in a situation here in Lot 14, which is my personal home I'm fixing to build, so I'm fine with the driveway being there, also has about 30 feet of fall on it, okay? This zoning condition was Richard Duncan's original development, so I didn't know about the landscape easement, I didn't watch for it. So it's my fault allowing the builder to do this. So I hope you would always consider this and let us help and save this driveway where it needs to be, okay? So, you know, been building in this county for almost 30 years now, so it's not been something I've ever run into, so this is a first. So hopefully you guys will consider this and be okay with it. And I'm here for any other questions you got, I've got other developments going in Cobb County now, so we'll let them speak, and if y'all need to ask me any other questions, I'll be here. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, my name is Debbie Fisher, and I live in Lock Highland, which actually abuts this particular development. This is kind of a unique situation, because Lock Highland has been involved with this development since 2013 on the original development. since 2013 on the original development under Z14. Over the years, we have put up with about as much erosion, code violations on, on securing their silt fences. They've laid down no mulch. They were supposed to plant grass. I can go on and on, but I won't on the different violations that we've endured. And it's more about just this driveway. It's really about a list of stipulations that were included in OB 21, which isn't just a matter of changing the site plan. They combined two different developments. They added four homes and a road. Over time, it seems to me the inspections that should be happening are not happening. And I'm going to guess that's how the driveway got put where it is. In speaking with Mr. Peterson, he wasn't sure how the driveway ended up where it was because it was permitted to be outside of the landscape buffer and outside of the easement. However, I'm pretty sure that inspectors do visit the site between the time that the, the concrete's poured and the time they put the house up for sale, which has been almost a year ago. It's been on the market for 318 days. So I ask that you all take a serious look at, at number one, the way this whole process has been done. It started out as a zoning for one particular subdivision. Then there was a second zoning for a separate subdivision. They were combined. They were never supposed to cut the slope in the back. That was our agreement with Richard Duncan. Jonathan Edwards bought it from Richard Duncan. He also agreed to not cut the slope in the back. Well, it's clear cut. Including in that clear cut, on about a 35 to 38% slope, were specimen trees. They were mature oaks. They're gone. What is there is dirt, silt, runoff, and a detention pond that hasn't been screened with lives escaping. Mr. Peterson tells me they don't have to landscape the detention pond. I was told that they don't have to put a zoning sign on the road that abuts this property. However, if you look at the stipulations as cited, it does cite stipulation ZOB 21, and I don't see anywhere on the amendment where they took the revisionary clause for them to not have to screen the detention pond that our homes have to sit and look at. So I ask that you deny this.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jill Flam. I'm representing East Cobb Civic Association concerning this matter and have been involved with the original case and the subsequent OBI's. The applicant is asking forgiveness. He poured the driveway. He poured it across the landscape easement, and we will not be making a recommendation on this particular application. We do not like to see people up here asking for forgiveness. But our concern is more than just this particular application. There are a number of stipulations in this development, and they appear to not have been followed. For example, stipulation 25 says that the driveway out to Wesley Chapel from Lot 2, which if you look at what's on your screens, is the developed house toward the top of the screen, will be removed once the subdivision street has been established. The subdivision street has been established for five months. The gentleman has a driveway out to the subdivision street, and yet the driveway has not been removed. In addition, the walled for the subdivision has not been installed along Lot 1. And also included in your packet that I sent to you is a letter from Mr. Tom Richards, who lives in Creekside Bluffs, which is the subdivision below this subdivision, concerning another, a lot of other stipulations that also seem not to have been adhered to. So while we will not be making a recommendation on this particular other business item, we recommend that at the very least, code enforcement be instructed to go out there and check that all the other stipulations are being enforced. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, like the opposition, have concerns about, well, first off, staff would, John, what's staff's recommendation?
Commissioner, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request, subject to the D cell lane to be installed within 60 days, subject to approval from Cobb DOT. Driveway be moved as far east as possible, subject to Cobb DOT approval within 60 days. 15-foot buffer to be fully planted and approved by county arborists where possible. No building permits are to be issued for any more lots in the subdivision until the three mentioned things are complete and verified by the zoning division manager. Cobb DOT comments and all previous conditions not in conflict.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I, I have issues with people coming in and asking for forgiveness, but my bigger issue is here, this, this has been going on for 20, since 2013. We have stipulation letter from the original zoning. We have another letter in 2014. We have another letter in 2016, one of them signed by Mr. Edwards. It's just ongoing, and I don't buy into the rationale that, oh, I didn't know about this. I mean, you know, as a builder, it's your job to know what the stipulations are. The stipulations are an agreement between the community and a developer. It doesn't matter whether you were the initial one or the subsequent one. Fact of the matter is, you know, ignorance is no excuse. And by allowing this driveway and then putting in the D cell lane that staff wants, that takes away a lot of the things that have been continually in the stipulation letters from the beginning. One suggestion to staff is that, Dana, we put in the development standards of the codes that any easements, whatever they may be, that they be clearly marked before any land disturbance permits are issued so that inspectors and anyone else knows exactly where they are. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please.
I make a motion that we deny other business item number 13 and give the property owner 90 days to bring the driveway into compliance.
We have a second?
Second, and I have a comment as well. This did originally come in when Wesley Chapel was in District 3. And I know I've had complaints on this property for other code violations, and inspections has been out there. So I, I agree that, you know, it needs to stop, and I agree and support.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, one other thing, and I'm not sure I can do this with a denial, but, and Dana might have to answer this question. It would seem to me that before anything new proceeds on this, staff needs to make sure that stipulations that were supposed to be done initially, like the wall and some of the other stuff that Mr. Richards talks about, fencing and tree save and all those kind of things that haven't been followed, you know, we need to kind of stop and make sure that stuff is followed first.
Understood, sir. And we're going to have Mr. Peterson and Ms. Pickett work together to ensure all the stipulations have been adhered to, and, and we're going to hold any new building permits until everything comes to compliance, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, Board, the last item on your agenda is to amend something that was previously adopted. And what's being passed around now is the language that was read in by Commissioner Burrow last when she made the announcement. Section 25 of the Board of Commissioners zoning and land use hearing procedures adopted January 11th, 1994, and last revised October 19th, 2004, allows any commissioner to amend an action taken at a previous hearing. A second shall be required, and full discussion shall be allowed. A majority vote shall be required for the adoption of the amendment. If passed, and if passed, a second will be needed to revise the conditions. This particular item would be to amend the stipulations for other business item number four of 2018 and SLEP 3 of 2018, as listed in the official minutes of February 20th, 2018 meeting. The three stipulations that need to be amended to clarify the record are, one, delete stipulation number four in its entirety, as it is a duplicate of existing stipulation number seven. Number two, revise stipulation number five to read office hours of operation Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and on Sunday from 12:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. And three, revise stipulation number seven to read no loading or unloading of moving vans or moving trucks over 12,500 pounds, Monday through Sunday, between the hours of 8:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. The zoning minutes are tasked for review, and if you have any questions, the county attorney and I are here to answer questions.
This is just administrative? Right.
No hearing.
Okay. Any questions coming from the board? Seeing none? Think that's the last case, right?
Yeah, but we have to vote on it.
I don't want to vote on it.
It's the last case of the, well...
I call, I call the question.
No, no, I have to, I have to make a motion.
I thought you already did.
No, I haven't said anything.
I said, I said this was administrat, did I not say this is administrative?
Right, but...
So what does that word administrative mean to you?
I have to have a motion.
We do have to vote on it.
That's not, that's not administrative, then.
I'm not sure what you mean by administrative.
Clearly, clearly.
But this process... Your package, Rob.
This process here, we need to have a vote to accept the motion to amend.
Right.
And then Commissioner Burrow will make the motion to, setting forth the amended conditions.
I got that. So it's not administrative.
We have to allow her to make it.
Okay, you're correct, sir.
Thank you.
It's amending something previously adopted.
Well, I got a comment after this is all said.
No, go ahead and tell us.
No, 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 you can make your motion, and I'll make my comment after the motion's on the record.
Well, you just said we have to have two different motions.
Right.
Okay, so am I making both of them, or is he making?
You're making them.
No, you can, you can make both of them.
This is your motion.
I would make a motion to ask the board to allow amending a previously adopted...
Approval.
What?
A previously adopted motion or previously adopted approval.
Right, approval from other business number four from last month.
We have a second. Any questions?
No, I just have a comment.
Sure.
This, this has come up before, and I, and I understand what Commissioner Burrow's trying to do, and I support what she's trying to do. I just, and Debbie and I have talked about this, what has been done in the past is that because of zoning and because of previous commissioners' actions, this is normally announced at a zoning hearing, because this is a zoning issue, that the next zoning hearing, we're going to do this. Because not, the same people that come to regular commission meetings do not always come, it's not the same people's zonings, and it has just been that normally what happens is you announce it at one zoning hearing, you're going to do it at the next one. So I can't support this because I think that it needs to be done that way. However, I do support the changes, and I will be voting for that.
Okay, all right. And my only, until you have a motion, we have a second?
Well, I have another.
All right, but I got a, we got a second for this one. All I'm going to say is, this is all caused because of what I've been trying to save the last several months. We have a policy, Wednesdays when the last document should be submitted, okay? Unless some exigent circumstances come up. And this is a great example, if you want it bad, you get it bad, all right? And the reason that this happens is because I didn't want to keep allowing documents who submitted during the process of the zoning hearing because, A, parties weren't here to hear about it, and B, you know, has had time to have the proper evaluation by all the board members. So I just think we should really, really need to look at this policy that we have here, is that everything should be into the board by the Wednesday before the hearing, right? That's the policy. And I think that if we do that, we won't have these kind of situations. And if, and if you can't make the Wednesday before, before it, then you continue the case without prejudice until the following month, when you have all the documents here, and then we can go to the normal courses of doing our business. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay.
So now we have, call a question.
Well, I have one more point to make. It is my understanding, after consulting with legal, that when you're clar, you're amending something previously adopted, which is a clarification of the hours, it's nothing new, it's existing in the, but there's conflict between the stip letter and my motion, and we're just, it's nothing new added, it's clarifying the hours on Sunday and actually making them more restrictive. So it's my understanding from, after consulting with legal, when this happened, and if you recall, the applicant caught that there was a conflict and tried to come up and speak, but the chairman said, "No more speakers." And it could have been clarified in February, but it wasn't. So, but it's still my understanding that because this doesn't require a public hearing or a 30-day notice, what have you, that it would just be done today. And the reason I tried to give notice because of the circumstances surrounding this particular other business and SLUP last month was to give the public some notice. It was in the zoning hearing minutes and everything. So I'm, I was just trying to be helpful, even though that wasn't required.
Correct.
Okay.
So respectfully.
Okay, so I'm going to call a question. I'm going to go ahead and call a question. And it passes 41 with Commissioner out in opposition.
Okay, now I would like to make a motion to amend something previously adopted pursuant to section 25 of the Board of Commissioners zoning and land use hearing procedures adopted January 11th, 1994, last revised October 19th, 2004, which allows any commissioner to amend an action taken at a previous hearing. A second shall be required, and full discussion shall be allowed. A majority of vote shall be required for adoption of amendment, and if passed, a second motion will be needed to revise the condition. This particular item would be to amend the stipulated, stipulations for other business item OB 4, 2018, and SLUP 3, 2018, as listed in the official minutes of the February 20th, 2018 hearing. Three stipulations need to be amended to clarify the record, which are, number one, delete stipulation number four in its entirety, as, as it is a duplicate of existing stipulation number seven, revise, the second amendment is revise stipulation number five to read office, office hours of operation Monday through Saturday, 9:00 to 6:00 p.m., and on Sunday, noon to 6:00 p.m. Revised stipulation number seven to read no loading and unloading of moving vans or moving trucks over 12,500 pounds, Monday through Sunday, between the hours of 8:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m.
Okay, we have a second?
And the attachments with the section 25.
Did you second it, Commissioner? Okay, we have a second, ain't discussion now. I'll call a question. Passes five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, what I'd like to do is ask staff to sit down with me and work on changing something that hasn't changed since 2004 and bring it more inconsistent with all the other community notifications for things that this board does relative to zoning and agenda, so that, and, and to Commissioner, you know, what Commissioner Burrow said, she did everything right, according to what it says, but this was announced last week that we were going to do it. And I just think that the community needs to have more notification. So I would like to sit down with staff, Dana, and since I know the chairman seconds everything we want to do, so I'd just like to change the procedure.
All right. I just stand by my usual comments. If we have the Wednesday deadline, most of these problems will go away. So, but with that, we're adjourned.